All right. It is seven o'clock. Are you all logged in and ready to go?
For sure.
All right. So I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I need to get to the right screen here. Today is, today is May 20th, and this is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista. And then first order of business, if you have cell phones, please put them on silent, airplane mode, whatever, so they don't disrupt the meeting. And then second, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome, everyone. I'm going to start with introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan. I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy. And then staff present this evening is Allison Falsky with WSB, our city engineer. Then we have, I was going to say Peter, Gary Peters, Director of Public Works. And then Ally Palfos, who is Director of Administration. And then we have Ann Meyerhoff, who is our city clerk, as well as our minutaker. And then to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, who is our city administrator, Brian Grimm, our finance director, Sarah Sensala, who is our, with Kennedy and Graven, and our legal counsel. And then we have our Director of Public Safety or Police Chief Paul Falls. With that, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we have, so this evening, we do have a special presentation. It'll be really fun. I always say that. There's a lot of people here for this. Drum rolls, please. So we have our audit, our 2023 audit presentation, and we have one of, an individual from Clifton Larson Allen, and it's Lu, which one? Luke?
Lucas.
Lucas, thank you. So please, thank you for joining us.
All right. Thank you for having me. Thank you, one of the mayor, members of the city council, for having me here. I'm Lucas Chase, Director on the Audit. Been on the Audit, uh, however, since we've had the Audit.
Yeah, we're not.
That is, sort of the years here. A big thank you to everyone involved, you know, Brian, his team, Jasper, Angie Renee, everybody else. There's a lot of hours that go into these audits, a lot of collaboration, and it was another great, another great one. You can see, look at the letters, it's all pretty much oral plate language, because there is no findings, and that's, that's always, always great, and helps keep things efficient as well. On our agenda here, you can see, I was going through your required communications, those in your governance letter essentially just have a short slide on what you see in that letter, as well as some audit results that you'll see in your audit opinion, control letter, you'll define some other things like that. And then some financial results, and some other miscellaneous items coming up to expect from next year. First, required communications, remember that the audit provides reasonable but not absolute assurance. We do a risk-based audit, so we'll look at significant areas and areas of risk, focus on those. And then, other than that, we provide, we do a test of controls. We don't provide opinion on effectiveness, but rather the design of those controls, and then it'll, you can do tests. There'll be fine issues, then that's where we report, report control findings. So just some reminders there. And also remember that these financial statements do include some management estimates in the numbers. You'll see this, this little sub-bullet here is a little different than last year, because there was a new audit standard this year related to estimates. We had to pull some of that testing up into our planning process, and determine if there are any higher-risk estimates. And you can see here, we determined there weren't any, any estimates that were considered higher risk, you know, your investments, your comp abs, calculations, your pension allocation, they got nothing too, too crazy. You do have a really small OPEV liability that normally in some other cities you might see as upon a higher risk, but since it's so immaterial to the city, we didn't list any, any higher-risk estimates here. Also of note, this year, there's a lot of time put in by management and the city, and then us as well, testing two new audits, or accounting standards, I should say, GASB 96, which is basically the LEAST standard, but for IT agreements. So getting over a year that, that you have right to use some software, you'd be booking some things, and we went through a lot of agreements that are determined not applicable. And then one that's a little less common that you'll see applying, where you did still have to do some inquiries, review your minutes, is if you have any public-public, public-private partnerships, service concession arrangements, things like that, where you might have to be booking any receivables or print flows. So went through some testing there, determined there's nothing applicable that affected financial things. And then, you probably already know by now, but required to communicate, receive the full cooperation of management. Your audit results, so this is kind of a pretty short slide, but pretty important one. What you hire us for is our audit opinion, that's that first bullet there. You got unmodified or clean audit opinion, that's the best we can provide, so that's, that's what you're looking for, and that's commendable. As I mentioned before, we have an internal control letter, you might even recall it, the yellow book letter, because you do have a yellow book audit, which is a little bit higher than just a standard audit. You know, people have worked on this, they have to meet certain CPE requirements, even specific to GASB, they just work on it. And in that letter, if we noted any issues, we'd report it, and there are no exceptions noted. Also, we provided a mensual compliance letter based off in the OSAs mensual compliance audit guide, covers seven different areas, it's several pages, we do a lot of tests related to that, we look at timely payments, you look at your bids, you look at your collateral of your, your deposits, things like that, and it's, it's a decent amount of testing, went through all that, and there's no exceptions noted, which is very commendable. It's a very commendable findings in other cities.
What, can I ask you, what kind of findings do you find in other cities, for instance?
The most common one, timely payments of invoices, just, you know, they have to wait, you know, if they have one meeting a month to cut the checks, and timing invoices, you want to delay payment.
Okay.
It's a pretty common one. Bid, bid laws, you'll run into some issues sometimes.
Okay.
Some upcoming emerging issues, more of this is just upcoming GASB standards. These will both be applicable in next year's audit, and kind of under technically your current accounting, but complement, and then it'll probably add next year. First is GASB 100, it's just accounting of changes, error corrections, making it more consistent how everybody's disclosing and accounting for those. And one new thing, this is normally where unexpected errors, but one new thing you will see, for example, this is if you have some fund changes on a non-major fund, the base of statements is a major fund, or the opposite direction, we're required to have disclosures for that going forward, and reconciling tables. So that's one, one effect you'll see from that, nothing too major there. Also, next year is some changes in how you're booking your compensated vacancies, your vacation, your sick time, your PTO, comp time, a little bit change in how that's interpreted. The old standard, GASB 16, right, this GASB 11 was written before the whole concept of PTO, comp time, sick and safe time, something like that. So it basically just called out sick and vacation, vacation you booked, if you had a balance sick, you only booked it if you paid it out on termination. This is going to make it a little bit closer to vacation, if you earn it, that's going to be paid out termination, or taken as sick time, or PTO, whatever you have. You have to estimate the liability. So you could increase your liability a little bit there, when we're looking at it with management, it doesn't seem like it'd be too big of an effect, but you might see a little bit slight increase there next year. These next few slides are going to be financial results slides. So this one, if you're looking, it's five years of your general fund, unassigned fund balance, the bar is your dollar amount showing, with, with the Y-axis on the left showing the dollar amounts, and then the line is fund balance as a percent of your expenditures. So you can kind of see, you had some planned spend downs in '21 and '22. In 2020, you guys actually had a budget spend down, but you had uptick there, because you had those ARCA funds coming in with COVID-19. You have to kind of assign those to your public safety, what you need to think you guys reported against. So that helped fund balance in 2020, and then between '22 and '23, you actually stayed pretty consistent. You had a slight increase, you increased from 41% to 43% there. Of note, this is just your unassigned fund balance, right, you have, you have total fund balance that increased a little bit more than your unassigned, but some of that extra increase is for a restricted category, the Public Safety Aid that'll be this year. You have $200,000, basically, your, your total fund balance increases $200,000 more than your unassigned because of that Public Safety Aid. And, but if you do look at that, you had 51% of, of expenses in total fund balances compared to 43% in unassigned. So this one's looking at your general fund revenue, it's, it's percentages of totals, so you can kind of look at the, the various colors of taxes on the left, working your way over to license and permits, governmental uses, and then other revenues. Big note, other revenues includes your investment income. So you look at '22, wasn't a great investing year, you have that outlier, that orange is over on the negative side, the opposite side of the Y-axis, so '22 is kind of a strange year, we had investment losses. This year, we had an investment gain, so you had a, basically a swing of $635,000 there to increase that, that orange to the positive side. And, you know, of course, taxes is your primary revenue still, but as a proportion, it went way down, because you had increases in pretty much all the other categories. So your investment income, as I mentioned, increased, license and permits, another strong year there, right, you had two commercial properties going on that, that helped boost those up, and you stayed strong in your residential permits. And then intergovernmental, if you look at that in here, that also had an increase of about $320,000, that's a Public Safety Aid, that $200,000 we mentioned before, and then you had some increases in your growth task force revenue. Okay, similar slide now for expenditures in your general fund. This is, this is almost, you know, not a lot to say here, because it's very consistent as a percent of total by department in the last five years, so that's a great to see, and makes it pretty predictable, and, you know, great, great way to budget, too. I'll try and note it on that one, unless there's questions. Now this one is this kind of combination of the previous slides in one. So you see, the, the dark blue, navy blue is your unassigned fund balance, that, that yellow in there, that's going to be your revenue, and then to the far right, your expenditures for the last five years. You can see there's kind of uptick, we mentioned four in '20, 20 revenues, that federal funding coming in, excuse me. And then, you know, expenditures slightly exceeded revenues in '21, '22, that was planned, spent down that fund balance, so that, that navy blue, dark blue, fund balance is coming down, then you had an uptick here in '23, that increase in fund balance we mentioned before, so your, your total fund balance increased 571,000, or 22.5%, but your unassigned portion of that increased about 396,000. Expenditures increased about 667,000, you guys had union agreement changes there, wage increases over time, you know, you had an increase in your fire contracts, and then just kind of inflationary pressures in general, increased that, but your revenue's increased more than your expenditures increased, so still had that increase in fund balance. Now getting into your, your primary enterprise bond, your water, sewer, stormwater, this is looking at unrestricted net positions that were, were dropping, your net investment capital assets, because that's just kind of sat there, and it's, it's already spent on those capital assets. So if you look at this, you can see your water net position kind of took a nice jump up, back up to the 2019 levels, with your, your increases in rates and water usage, and adjustments to your tiers to help with water conservation, right? You can see that you had a little bit of an increase in stormwater, build up that fund balance for future projects, and then sewer remaining relatively consistent with the previous two years, so that kind of just stays status quo from the previous two years. This is a little closer look at the water fund now. So you can see that the top red line is your operating income, if you add back in depreciation, kind of get closer to cash basis, because we've already expended those funds, so it'd be kind of closer if you're looking at your operating, you know, cash flows and your cash flow statement. The green one on the bottom, that's your actual operating income, you'll see in your statements for the last five years. And then you have your operating revenues on the left, and then the light blue one is your operating expenses. So if you look at that, you can see we did have positive operating income last two years, positive cash flows, and we had positive operating cash flows all five years, but weren't quite covering that depreciation expense in the previous three years. Any other dances?
Freeze that.
All right. Same slide for the sewer fund now. So you had a, you know, slight operating losses for all the past five years, but if you add back in that depreciation, you had positive cash flows. So you're going to kind of, slight losses there, but you're basically almost covering that depreciation expense. So just, you'll maybe slight adjustments there, and you could be just about, you know, positive operating revenues, a pretty close last five years there. There we go, stormwater fund, same slide. So you had operating losses, have been, you know, steadily improving, but you have had losses in that, that green line. The red line, you add in depreciation, you know, because you're so close to breaking, of course, you have positive cash flows once you add in depreciation. So you had an operating loss of about $10,000, '22, it went down, operating loss of about $5,000, '23. So you can see positive cash flow from operations overall in the last five years. Now this slide looks at your debt service, before, kind of looking at the, this year and the next five years, some notes on the bottom. So remember, you know, we did, we did issue the 2023 bonds, so that's almost $7 million there, we issued in April of '23. Your, your total debt in '22 was $17,365,44, and then that went up to $22,547,364 in '23, and you paid principal of $1.6 million during '23. So then if you look at that, that affected that new bond, you have an initial increase in debt service for the next couple of years, but then that tapers off pretty quickly. You have your PFA bonds are, are going to be scheduled to mature in '24, paying those off, and your 2028 equipment certs are going to be paid off in '26, and then you have 12A and 14A bonds scheduled to pay off in '27, so when you kind of come right back down to normal by about '28, '29, and, you know, if you plan to pay off anything earlier, then of course that'll adjust the schedule. Now this, you look at this, but I see in 2022 there, this is per capita data from OSAs data, of course, other cities don't have their audits in their state report and forms that in, so we're using '22 data here. And we had to ask to get this, because actually I don't think it's fully posted yet on their website, but we did get some data here, kind of comparing your per capita taxes to your, your kind of peer neighboring comparable cities, and you're, at least in '22, you're below kind of your, your pure neighboring cities there. So some interesting data there. And then here's a per capita slide on your current expenditures. So this is back out capital and debt, and then it's on a per capita basis, and, you know, take this for what it's worth, because each city has different needs, varies year to year, but you can see here, you're pretty comparable to the cities on the right, and then you had a couple outliers there. I want to make your, well, blow that. Any questions I can address?
I don't see any glazing over, so that's good. Lot of information, but good, good charts, and yeah, yeah, thank you. And it sounds like staff did a great job as well, so kudos to you, and we're, we're in good shape, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we don't have any persons to be heard signed up, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. They consist, approve our work session meeting minutes from May 6, approve our city council regular meeting minutes from May 6, 2024, C is approve our claims, and D is approve a transfer to close out 2014 A debt service fund, fund number 526, and then E is approve an allocation of the surplus from the fire contract. Is there a motion to approve those A through E?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. We have no public hearings, so we'll move on to our business items. So first, we're going to start with our consider personnel actions.
Yes, one request, could we get a motion to accept the audit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. So is there a motion to receive and accept the 2023 financial audit?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ally.
Yes, no, thank you.
All right.
So there are multiple personnel action items, so I'll just kind of go over each of them briefly, as we discussed them in depth at our last meeting. The first two actions proposed are promotions for our associate accountant and our customer service representative. The personnel committee is recommending the associate accountant/deputy city clerk be promoted to senior accountant/deputy clerk, and the customer server, service representative be promoted to administrative assistant. These positions have been evaluated and scored, and there is a 10% wage increase proposed. Staff has evaluated the market data for these positions, and the new wages are in line with the market. The next two actions are market adjustments for Director of Public Works and Director of Public Safety. The 2024 market data polled for these two positions indicated that they were significantly below market. The personnel committee is proposing a 10% increase for both of these positions to more closely align with the market and better retain our staff. The total impact of these changes, if effective mid-year July 1, 2024, is about $20,000, which is proposed to be funded through the surplus from several open positions so far this year. And I do know these adjustments are very appreciated by staff, and by continuing to do these and evaluating the market, it will help in retaining our quality employees. So those are the first four we want to do. Do you want me to do the deputy chief right along with it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a succession planning item. Lieutenant Squires has been identified as an incumbent for the Director of Public Safety position, and staff has begun succession planning for Paul Falls' retirement. The personnel committee feels there is a need for a transition period from lieutenant to Director of Public Safety. Originally, we were going to propose this transition be effective January 1 of 2025, but at the last meeting, council requested that this item be brought for approval today. This position will be non-union, and staff has evaluated the position, and proposes entering Squires into the 2024 pay plan at a grade 10 step 7, which is about a 5% increase from his current wage, and it also aligns with the market data for the second-in-command positions in surrounding departments. The budget impact of this change, if implemented mid-year, is about $3,000. So in total, $23,000 for all those changes.
Thank you, Ms. Palfos. So I just want to make a couple comments. Recently, Councilmember McGregor and I were talking, and she mentioned that we've really gotten a lot accomplished over the last three and a half years. And I, I told her, my, my comment back was, I agree. And one of the reasons is because we have an excellent, excellent staff. And in fact, I, I even commented, and I, I mean this sincerely, we've had many good, great employees over the years, but I do believe that we have the best team in place right now. And it's because of your dedication and your hard work that we are able to accomplish so much in our city, and accomplish it in a very favorable manner, too. And so I really appreciate our staff, and at our State of the City address, I did mention to our residents that yes, our, your taxes are increasing, primary, or one of the big reasons is because we're paying our staff what they, what they should be paid. And so I'm, that's just my comments. I think you guys do a great job. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I'm asking for, so I need approval of promoting, do you want it separate, altogether?
All in one motion is fine, if you just can list them all.
All right. So the motion would be approval of promoting accountant/deputy clerk to senior accountant/deputy clerk with a proposed pay adjustment for Angie Bowle. And number two would be approval of promotion of customer services assistant to administrative assistant for Darcy Atkinson. These would be effective July 1. And then also approval of a market adjustment for Director of Public Works, Gary Peters, effective July 1. And also approval of a market adjustment for Director of Public Safety, Paul Falls, effective July 1. And then consider, and then the succession planning action would be approval of promoting a lieutenant to deputy police chief with proposed pay adjustment for Craig, Craig Squires, effective July 1, 2024. Do I have a motion to the, all of that?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, and keep up the good work. All right. Next, we move on to our pavement maintenance proj, um, yes, maintenance project, city project number 02-24.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan, members of council. This evening, I'm pleased to present to you the results of two quote packages that went out for pavement maintenance. And I do apologize, the maps, I did not include those in the, in the packet, but we looked at this back in March, was when council authorized us to prepare and distribute the quote packages. We did receive three quotes for each of the proposed projects. The crack fill and seal coat, we have throughout, throughout the city, we have some over in Maple Forest, up on the north side as well, and then we're also looking at some areas in Woodland Cove. And then we're also doing some crack fill, seal coat in, on water set, some areas in Woodland Cove, and then doing some reclamite down in the project area that we did in 2024. So we had two quote packages, because reclamite tends to be a little more of a specialty, or rejuvenator tends to be more of a specialty product, so we, we bid it out as two packages. And included in your packet is that summary. We had three, three companies respond to each, each quote package, included on page 197 of your packet. Pearson Brothers is the low quote for the crack fill and seal coat, and corrective asphalt is the low for reclamite. They are both under the estimated cost for each component of the pavement management project for this year. They've both performed well on past projects, and we are recommending that the council award the, the contracts for the pavement management project this year.
Thank you, Ms. Falsky. Question, Pearson Brothers, have they done work in the city before? Okay, so you're familiar with them, and they're good?
Yeah, they're very good.
Okay. And then also corrective asphalt, I haven't heard of them.
So, um...
They did last year's, didn't they?
Yeah.
Did they do last year's?
Yeah, Mayor Whelan, if I may. So the reclamite components is kind of relatively new to the city's arsenal, if you will, of pavement management, and corrective asphalt has provided quite an extensive history with Public Works Director Peters, and they did last year's project, so we are very confident in their ability to perform the work here.
And just explain really quick once again, what's the difference between crack seal and, and then the reclamite?
Sure, so...
Or I should say, yeah.
I'll go through all, thank you for asking.
Well, you don't have to go through all of them.
It'll be quick. So crack fill, when you see the cracks on the surface of the pavement, they're blown, all the debris's blown out, and they put a sealer in those cracks. A seal coat is like a tack of some sort that's spread across the roadway surface, and then little chips, rock chips are put on top. It stays in place for a few days, and then the rocks are swept up. Reclamite is, it's what they call a rejuvenator, so I, I can tell you the 10,000-foot level, because that's all I understand, too. And what they do is they apply the, the material to the surface, and it, and it replenishes the asphalt that's in place in the mix in the pavement, and so it helps keep that pavement flexible, because when that pavement becomes hard and isn't flexing anymore, that's when we start to get breaking. So there's been a number of test locations for reclamite through the city, and Public Works Director Peters is, is happy with the performance, and so we continue to look at options to, to use that reclamite.
Okay.
Similar, it'd be similar to treating like your deck with like a water sealant, you know, where it soaks in, it helps repel water, it rejuvenates, kind of seals up the wood more, and puts a protective barrier, but you know, like I said, it actually, it, it can penetrate in there, makes it, and keeps the, from tearing.
Drying out.
Sorry, trying to think. It keeps that asphalt from deteriorating in the sun and stuff like that from getting beat up, so it really helps prolong the life.
Yeah, okay. And then some of these, I think, would be covered by our escrow accounts, is that correct?
Uh, in the Woodland Cove area.
Woodland Cove would be, yes.
Are we getting enough money to cover this in our escrow, do you know?
I think we change it now to state that it is at the market value, I believe, is what it is in now, in place.
Because don't we take the escrow like a couple years ahead of time?
We take it with the development agreement. So, I mean, usually, I think we've, I think we've done an okay job of making sure we get enough to, to hit the respective development areas or respective targeted streets, so it seems like it's matched up pretty well.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're escrowing enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions? Any other questions? And hearing none, is there a motion to, let's see, to accept the quotes and award contract, the contracts for the city project number 02-24 for the seal coat? And then we'll do the same thing, a resolution, we'll do double here, a resolution to accept the quotes and award the contract for city project 0224 for the reclamation.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then next, accept the bids and award a contract for the municipal production of wells 8 and 9.
Madam Mayor, council, yes, this is for the drilling of the new wells that will be serving the new water treatment plant. We had a 2S put a plan together to, and plan and specs to send out. We had a pre-bid conference mandatory for anybody that wanted to put a quote in on this to meet, to understand the complexity of our quote. We had different timelines in there, so we just wanted to make that, identify to them that what would it cost be if you did it this year? What would it cost be if you could do it spring? What would the cost be next fall? Three people, three bidders, companies showed up. Only one returned a quote, unfortunately, and that was trout companies. The other two were contacted and Renner was one of them. They said they're just too busy, cannot, could not honestly supply a quote. And Keys, who was doing our well 6 rehab, honestly said that they probably could not compete with trout at this time. Their forte is more in the rehab area where trout is more into the drilling side of it. So, we ended up getting one quote from trout companies. But the good news is they picked the alternative to have it done by May 31st, which is...
Twenty, twenty-four, yep. Not this year.
Of 2025. I hope they're not getting it.
Twenty-five.
By the end of the month, I'll be really impressed. Twenty twenty-five, so they can get us on schedule and get it done. So, we're happy with that and it is a little bit below what the projected price was to be. The second part of it is if we end up having to put a screen on that well, that was what the $38,840 was for. We are hoping we do not have to do that. Well 4 at this time has one for that need, but we're hoping it doesn't, but it's just in there just in case.
Okay.
We'll find out, once the well's drilled, they do test pumping and see what the water quality is and content comes out, but we're anticipating we shouldn't need one, but it's just in there for caution. So, we recommend adopting the resolution that's attached, 4324, to accept the bids and award the contract to trout wells, for the municipal wells drilling of numbers 8 and 9.
Okay. And just a real quick question for Sarah. Because we only got one bid, we're still good, right? Because we did go out for public bids.
Madam Mayor, members of council, yes, from reading the staff report, it looks like this project was competitively bid and if you only receive one bid, that's all you have.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to double check. All right. Any other questions, comments? Let's drill. All right. Is there a motion to accept Resolution Number 43-24, which would be accepting the bid and awarding a contract for the municipal production of wells 8 and 9 and it would go to the trout company?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, we're looking forward to those wells being drilled by May 31st, 2025. Okay. Then, and then amend city code, number 21-01, which is the absentee ballot counting board ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our current absentee ballot board city code language is not aligned with state statute. City Attorney Sensala has drafted an amendment to city code to reference state statute as to cover any future changes. This will not impact how we administer absentee voting. Just clarify the city code. So, city staff is recommending approval of this code amendment, so it is effective prior to absentee voting for the primary.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 488, which is amending city code 210-01 subdivision 2 pertaining to absentee ballot counting board?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, now we move on to our administrative items, staff reports. Mr. Krugel.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council. I kind of gave a little brief legislative update at the work session, but I guess the big component is that there was not a bonding bill that was passed. I think everybody's aware of that, but the legislative session is now closed until next year. So, the other thing I had, we had obviously Trista Day on Saturday. It was a beautiful day. I was not able to attend, but I heard it was a great day and pretty well attended by the public as well. And then the next event that we have coming up is the bus tour on June 4th. So, I believe that the RSVP is currently open. I think there's still some seats available if anybody's...
Lots of seats available.
Lots of seats available. So, if anybody's interested in going, please check out our website and RSVP. That's all I have.
Okay. And then we have our city engineer, engineering update.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan, members of council. So, the reconstruction project from last year, as you may recall, they were, they got everything paved, they got everything seeded. The item that they didn't get to was the tree planting. So, here we are in the spring. We have some residents, a lot of residents that are quite anxious to get the work done as we are. I've been in weekly communication, if not more than once a week, with the contractor. You know, true Minnesotans, we get that false sense of spring when we get those warm days. The challenge with construction is we need some consistently warmer days and we just weren't getting those, certainly in March and the first part of April. You know, we were still highs in the 40s, lows in the 30s. So, still challenging to go and get any work done out there. And on top of that, contractors, they don't have all their employees back yet. They're on furlough typically through the winter. So, we've been doing our best to communicate to residents that while we see some warmer temperatures, it's not the, you know, everybody's waiting to get out and get the work done. We've got to get those workers back and those temps up. But we're there now. I believe the irrigation contractor's been out there doing some work. They didn't notify me. But we're seeing some flags go up, so I did talk to the general contractor today and I said, "They need to tell me when they're coming into town." And then we're going through and looking, taking a look at the restoration work. We've been taking calls and emails from residents, but now we're at the point where we've had enough of a time for that seed and sod to grow, that it's time to go and inspect that and get that punch list ready and over to the contractor. So, they were out last week, the contractor was out last week extending some storm pipe to put in some drains because we saw a couple areas that were holding water. So, they have been out there doing some work, just not as quickly and not as all the work as I know some of the residents are anxious to see. So, it's coming.
Okay.
I don't have a specific schedule for you yet, unfortunately.
All right. Chief, I think you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. So, as you're probably aware, we are part, our Minnetrista-St. Bonnie are both part of the Highway 7 safety corridor. And that group, I believe Minnetoka took the lead on applying for a grant that would allow for some funds specifically targeted at extra enforcement, as well as education and advertising for like messaging. And so, that grant was awarded and our group, which goes from St. Louis Park all the way to us, so every agency is part of this, was awarded $450,000. $200,000 of that is specifically for enforcement. So, you will start to see some additional enforcement that we can pay out overtime dollars to go out and provide extra enforcement along Highway 7 in an attempt to get people to drive more safely. So, that's, this is above and beyond the SAFENSOVER or, I guess today it's called the TZD, Toward Zero Death Grant. We participate in that grant as well every year, but this will be in addition to that. So, and you'll probably see a lot more messaging. There will be some meetings coming up in the coming weeks where they will kind of dive in specifically what the topics will be or targets will be and what the messages will be. But I just wanted to let you know that we were awarded that grant as part of the group.
That's great. Chief, could you also tell the council a little bit about the cameras, the license cameras?
Oh, yes. Update on the cameras. So, Flock is the company that we used to get the cameras, the automatic license plate reader cameras. It's a lot to say. These are in use all over the metro and our company is currently in the, they have staff that went out and evaluated the sites that we identified, two on Highway 7, two on County Road 92. So, that installation will be coming up here hopefully in the coming couple of weeks. And then there's some things that have to happen before they go operational, but they are moving forward fairly quickly. So, all of the authorizations to be able to connect these to the BCA system, all those agreements have been taken care of. So, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that had to take place before we could actually make this happen. But all of that's been done. So, I'll certainly, as soon as they get installed in our operation, I'll let you know.
Yeah, thank you.
We're looking forward to that.
Good. Okay, any other staff reports? Okay, so we'll do council. I'll start. So, first, I had a meeting with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Park Committee Commission. And of course, as I mentioned earlier at an earlier meeting, they would like to do a party in the park. And we'd like to start with one this year. And they picked Lyle Park in the Hunter's Crest neighborhood. And the cost will be very minimal. What they're thinking is, I think Anna, who is the Vice Chair, was able to secure or get a commitment from like a sweet treat truck or whatever that wouldn't have a minimum, so they would come at no charge. And we're planning, and I talked to the freshwater education people that have the bounce house and they said that they would bring their bounce house. And then we'll have a few little incidental expenses such as buying some tattoos for people to put on, their kids to put on their faces and maybe some crayons or something like that. So, we'll have, and we'll have activities, some fun games. Brett, the Chair, is in charge of the games and then he's also bringing a music that's family-appropriate. So, so there'll be a lot of fun things happening and that is occurring on June 25th. It's a, from 5 to 7. Again, June, it's a Thursday evening, June 25th, from 5 to 7 in Lyle Park, which is in the Hunter's Crest neighborhood. And come one, come all, bring your kids, bring your grandkids and have a lot of fun.
Lisa, clarification, is it Tuesday, the 25th?
It's the 25th. I'm sorry, did I say Thursday? Okay. I have too many dates going on here. All right. So, that's one thing. And then I attended the public safety meeting with Paul Falls and Jasper and St. Bonnie. So, some of this stuff is, he brought forward and notified you about some of the ongoing things there. The other thing is, I also attended, let me see my list here because it's kind of long. Okay. So, I attended Trista Day, as did Ann McGregor. Thank you to Ann for being there, really appreciate that. And then I also participated at the St. Bonnie Fire Committee meeting and I know that Ms. Refkin is usually there and I know that you're the backup and I know that he's the back, Jasper is the backup-backup and they had to settle for fourths. So, I did attend that. It was, it was very nice, nice meeting and we talked a little bit with, one of the things that we wanted to talk about was with the Watertown Township Group and the Laketown Township Group, whether or not they wanted to be part of the, we'll call it, as Chief Peterson says, partnership. And they, they're fine just continuing to contract with whatever this, I'm going to call it Fire District Meeting. Okay, so we're talking about Fire District or Fire JPA and they said they're fine with just continuing to contract. That was one of the big discussions at the fire meeting. And the other one, they did have a whole long list of everything and I know I didn't do very good notes or not as well as Ms. Refkin usually does, but they have a whole long list of stuff that they do during the year and I never knew this and it's really impressive. They do an Easter egg hunt, they did that March 30th. They had 1,500 people attend. Then they did, they attended the Trista Day event with their fire trucks. And the Memorial Day, they're going to be doing a parade around town. Then they do quarterly dinner meetings with former or retired firefighters to kind of keep them in the loop and keep them informed. They also are participating in a softball tourney in New Germany, August 3rd through the 5th. And then they have an October Fire Prevention Week. And then they also have breakfast with Santa. They're also going to be participating again December 5th, just a reminder, for our holiday tree lighting event. And then they also do a fire recognition banquet. That's a lot of events for a small fire department. So, they do a great job with community outreach programs. And then, of course, they talked a little bit about the new fire truck that they ordered. They should be getting that sometime in August. Sorry.
He left a national light out on there.
Oh, I did, sorry.
Not you, he did.
Oh, he did, okay. And then, let's see, public safety advisory meeting, the city bus tour, which will be June 5th, so 4th. See, I have too many dates here. One other thing, upcoming ones, I know Ally, Jasper, myself and Ann are going to be meeting with Midco this next week, talking to them. We'll see what they want and what we can do. And then also, I have a question for Gary. When will the tennis pickleball court at the Gene Lanier Park be painted?
You and everyone else, get away from better weather. I was waiting for the weather to get warm. We just talked to them. They are, we are first on the list to get done. And we're hoping for the second weekend, June, to have all the other courts resurfaced.
Okay. And so, then that'll be...
We need these, like the rain, trust me.
Yeah, 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 we like the rain, we like the rain.
Not as much as we're going to get tonight, but yeah, I know, we've had a lot of questions. Everything's coming in. We just slid, seeded there, we seeded a few other parts that are growing in real well and everything's coming in.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm looking forward to a ribbon cutting there, too.
And with all the rain, you don't need a sprinkler there.
There you go, there you go. That's all I have. So, the mound fire, you can talk about that.
Lisa, myself and Jasper attended the mound fire, St. Bonnie fire partnership district meeting, whatever we're calling it, last week. Most of the time was spent discussing when everyone is available to meet. And then the plan is to go forward and set dates and goals that we want everyone to meet and get the information that we need. We're still waiting to get information from Kevin about taxes and what this will do to taxes for, from taking the money out of our general fund and then seeing what people would be taxed with the fire district to give other towns, not necessarily ours, an idea that what their residents would pay for the district. But the next step will be to find a date that everyone can attend and start moving forward. But on the plus side, both chiefs are 100% for this, so that is working to our advantage.
Ann, anything?
Well, I attended Trista Day and I want to say that I thought it was an absolutely fabulous day. If I recall correctly, they had the flu last year and so I missed a year and this, the pony rides and the rabbits and the goats. I sent a picture to my husband and threatened to bring one home. And I went around and talked to a number of the vendors, the food was excellent, it was excellent choices. It was a really, really great day. Really good day.
Yeah.
I attended the Pioneer-Sarah Creek Watershed District Meeting and we adopted our budget for next year. And so, Minnetrista's commitment there will be $15,118.26, which is an increase of $109.45.
$109. Wow. Do you think we can handle that, Brian?
All right, we'll get back to you. So, and then we did have a presentation from the county, who's actually involved quite a bit in this water conservation and so on. And they're developing a program to mesh with our Planning Commission information so that if there are opportunities like to approve the watershed or do conservation in general when a development comes to us with this project, then... when a developer comes to us with this project, then we can be aware of that this has been kind of mapped out. Maybe there's a ravine that needs some work or something like that. So I think it'll really be a good additional tool for the planning commission to just build in some of the solutions right away.
Great, thank you. Claudia.
Council, I attended the Gillespie Center's May Executive Board meeting. They did hire a permanent executive director. She's local, very well known by people in the community. Her name is Tracy Phillips. And I was surprised to see that they're actually doing financially better than I had, I had heard. So they're operating at a deficit annually, but it's somewhere in the $30,000 a year range, not what I had previously been told. They are very actively, they have a food shelf there now. It's not just the bakery. They actually are working with the West Tonka Food Shelf. And I wondered why that was necessary. But I guess the handicap parking at the food shelf is very small. There's only two spots. And it's very easy for the, kind of the older seniors that are in need of this service to come right up to the Gillespie, park undercover parking, scoot in, get some basic necessities. But I was completely surprised at how much food is needed in the community. So I know they do plan on kind of having a road show coming up where they are going to go back to cities, kind of present their new plans, what they're doing, what's working. Their fundraising is really going quite a bit better than it had been in the past years. A lot of that is thanks to this new, this new arrangement with Mackentunes. They've been so generous and they've more than doubled their little baked fundraiser. It's kind of a wonderful thing. Brings a lot of people in and they love it. So I look forward to them coming and presenting. They're going to be going to all the cities. There's really only one city orno that is still kind of giving them an annual stipend. So hopefully we'll get to hear what they have to say soon.
Okay. That's it. So thank you. That concludes all of our reports and business items. So if there's a motion to adjourn, we can be heading home.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And we'll see you on June 4th. 3rd?
3rd.
3rd.
Bus tour is on the 4th.
Bus tour is on the 4th, okay. I know.